All right. Good evening. The school board would like to... Did she say wait? Did you say wait? Oh, okay. Good evening. Welcome to our school board work session. The time is now 5:36. Oh, I'm echoing. Okay. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our apologies, little technical difficulties there. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mrs. Poland, would you please call the role?
Certainly. Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Julianne is excused. Ms. Maple is excused. Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Board has a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Poland. First up on our agenda is an overview of charter school contracts with special education updates, district administration charter principals, and board members. We'll have a discussion on charter contracts and special education. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Minor.
All right. Thank you, President Burnett. Most of the time will be facilitated by Assistant Superintendent Gillum and Ms. Kate Hall, our Executive Director of Special Education for this first part. For the board, we wanted to discuss some contractual changes in regards to special education for this year's contracts for charter schools. Also wanted to talk briefly about administration's recommendation changing from yearly charter contracts to our recommendation to a five-year charter contract. And I thought it would be good to have charter school principals in the room for that. And then for this year, we've moved the charter school reports to this work session. So we're looking forward to having our charter school principals and some of their APC members provide us with those reports this evening. So welcome charter school principals and APC members. It's great to have you here this evening, and I'm looking forward to the rich conversations that we'll have. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Gillum at this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Minor. Our first item... Is it working? Can you hear me? Okay, good. It's weird when you can't hear yourself. Okay. Our first item that we just wanted to discuss was relating to previously in the work between charter schools and our special education department, we had a more informal memo that the department sent out to charter schools relating to services and responsibilities between the department and the charter school. So the only change to the contract language was the addition of number 11, which states "Special education providing a free and appropriate public education is a joint responsibility of both the charter school and school district. Charter schools are subject to all state and federal laws, including but not limited to the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Specifics related to these responsibilities are outlined in Appendix A." So then the other addition to the contract is Appendix A, which I will turn it over to Ms. Hall to talk about.
You all have a copy of the appendix, yes? So this is in large part text that has been available between the special education department and the charter schools for several years. None of it, even at the time that it was written, really represented a substantive change to how services were being delivered and funded at the charter schools, but rather just an effort to sort of codify who was responsible for what, because we were finding that sort of 11th-hour emergencies would pop up where there wasn't a teacher, or there wasn't an aide, or there wasn't a secretary, or something that needed to happen. And it was becoming a kind of budgeting challenge to fill those gaps. So the charter principals should be pretty familiar with this same language that had been sent out in an email memo several years ago and has been referenced a few times. Fundamentally, the school district is ultimately responsible for the services that take place at charter schools. So if there were to be an issue of some kind, it would fundamentally be the school district that would be responsible for that. So it's very important to all of us that we're all meeting our responsibilities so that we don't have those issues. And in order to clarify that, the memo was developed. It outlined some things related to the IDA. Students cannot be precluded from applying to or participating in charter schools because they require an IEP. All of our charter schools have special education services. One caveat to that is certain high levels of need. We are not required under federal law to have identical services available at every school. So much like when we were doing the boundary changes and we were talking about our specialized district-wide programs, charter schools are not required to have that level of support necessarily. So if a student has needs that go beyond what is available at every school, and we would be recommending that they go to a district-wide program, that's one spot where it might be that the charter schools is not the least restrictive environment for that particular student. But that being said, students apply, they are accepted in much the same way that all students are, and services can be delivered right there at the school. I won't read through the entire memo, but essentially charters are... The funding for charters goes directly from the funding formula into the charter schools. We do not be on the administrative fee for things like payroll and HR services, administrative services. Special education does not hold back any funding that goes directly to the charter schools. And so as such, it's the expectation that the charter schools are hiring their own staff to support the special education needs at their building. And each of the buildings has different needs. Some schools might have more students than others, and so they aren't all going to have identical staffing, but the idea being that they're staffing for the needs of their students. One exception to that is what are referred to as related services. So school psychologists, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, who am I missing? Physical therapists. Those positions tend to be extremely hard to fill. They're hard to recruit for, and we have historically provided those to the charter schools, and we will continue to do such. There is a point, a tipping point at which if the need becomes so high, there is a footnote on... Is it on the first page? I think it's on the first page. Related to, on a case-by-case basis, it might be that services needed to be paid for on an hourly basis. So if there was, you know, an OT needed to be there several days a week, that sort of thing, that was beyond what would be standard, we would look at that. There has not been a case that I'm aware of in my tenure where that's in any fashion been necessary. And equipment and that sort of thing would also be the responsibility of the charter schools. So I'll quit talking, I guess, if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Doran?
Just a clarification. If, based on the caseload at a charter school, they only needed a quarter time or half-time, that's how that would be allocated out, is it?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be allocated from us necessarily. The charter, I assume staffing is done with principals and the APCs together, but they would sort of make those determinations. And for example, many, many years ago, in my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, but Watershed's special ed teacher, I believe, is .8, and they have a full-time aide as well. That was a decision that was made at Watershed to meet the needs of their students and seems to meet that need. Other schools have a full-time teacher and either a para or no.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hardy?
I've got a couple, too. You can put me back in the queue. So if a charter school were to accept a deaf or hard-of-hearing student, would the charter then be responsible for paying for the interpreter or any of the audio equipment that comes along with those type, or students with those larger disabilities but whose least restrictive environment could very well be a charter?
Yeah, I believe so.
So that would be on the charter?
I believe so, yes.
You have another question? You can go ahead, Mrs. Hardy.
I have lots of general sped questions and partly to charters, to no one's surprise.
I see no other hands at the moment. Go ahead.
Okay. And it just comes out of years of being through this, being a charter school mom myself, so I've seen it play out. If students is attending that school and it turns out that they need more services, say, having the need for like a paraprofessional, not one-to-one, but generally around there, it would then be on the charter schools to hire and maintain that if that's their IEP's team decision that that is what the student needs.
Yeah, and this would be, you know, this is certainly an administrative and school board conversation, but historically, the way that that has been handled in recent years, I can think of one particular example. That determination was made been dear. It wasn't clear whether or not the student required a district-wide program or whether just some level of additional paraprofessional support would help. We and the charter school worked together to have special education fund that para for the remainder of the year with the idea that they would take data during that time and determine whether or not a placement change was necessary. If it wasn't necessary, the charter school would then look at funding that as part of their student population need. And if it was necessary, then we would look at transferring that student to a program that had appropriate services. But those, I think some level of that fill in the gaps is going to be necessary, just, I guess, the economy of scale allows us to have a little bit more flexibility for part year situations.
And I guess this is more general questions, not so much related to funding, but things around how we're implementing IEPs and following IDA or charters. Things like manifestation determination meetings. Most charter schools have behavioral contracts, and I have heard of a couple charter schools changing a student's placement due to a breach in a behavior contract without holding an MDT and just saying like, well, they go back to the neighborhood school. That's where they go. As far as that being permissible under IDA? Or is it... My understanding is that's a change in placement. And regardless of what a behavior contract would be, you would need to have a manifestation determination meeting before you could remove the child from their charter.
I feel like that's a bigger question than I could definitively speak on in this moment. Certainly, a manifestation determination is required for a change in placement. What constitutes a change in placement versus a change in location is a more nuanced question. So I would say it's a slippery slope, but I couldn't definitively tell you at this minute if it's okay or not.
I would love to have something clearer for our charter school principals that outlines that process, because I've known quite a few students now who have encountered that. And I think everybody being really clear on this is how those play. This is how that works, and it gives the parents an idea, too, of what they should and should not expect.
And certainly philosophically, we shouldn't be punishing a child for something that is a manifestation of their disability, which is the purpose of the MDR. So review, sorry. MDT, MDR, same thing. Yeah.
I was worried I didn't know.
Is there any other questions from board members? Or can I let Mrs. Hardy continue? Go ahead, Mrs. Hardy.
I'm sorry, guys. I guess my other general concerns, and this is one I voiced, and I've been encouraged to voice it in an open meeting, is currently the LEA, which is like the person who's legally going to be held responsible, as Ms. Hall pointed out. If anything isn't provided in special education, or someone were to hire a lawyer to sue a decision, is the district. It lies with us. We are the ones who would have to defend that in court. And that can be placements, that can be services, that can be any number of things a family can disagree with. And so I worry that by having all of the special education funding flow directly to charters, it puts the district in a hard-to-defend position, because we're not always the ones making those decisions. Different charters have historically handled special education different ways. I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. I've heard a lot of things. I'm hoping a lot of them are misunderstandings. But it is my worry that the district is going to eventually be litigated over how we're handling special education at some of our charters, as far as students being counseled out and not being accepted in the first place, or being convinced to leave, which would be a violation, having them removed. And those are... I'm not sure how to handle that. I'm okay if this district's position is this is how, you know, we still want it to funnel that way. I'm not on the board for much longer, but I'm going to voice those concerns so that they're on record somewhere, that I think we need either a lot more oversight of our special education in our charters to make sure that we're following IDA. It's a complicated law. It has lots of different ways that you can go wrong. It even happens in our neighborhood schools. Or that the funding, and then it's not a problem. If a charter school has a larger-than-normal population with more pervasive needs, then it's on the district to make sure we pay for those. And it becomes less of a, well, how much sped services are right for that amount of charter that we're willing to step in? Because at the end of the day, as a parent of a student with a disability, it does not matter if my child's at a charter or my child's at a neighborhood school federally, they are supposed to get those services, as long as that's their least restrictive environment. And who pays for that is not the parent's problem. And oftentimes, it influences decisions that are made at the table, even though we know it shouldn't. It's how it happens.
I would wholeheartedly agree that the funding side of this is by no means a parent's problem. Philosophically, there is no question that students with disabilities have right to access charter schools in the same way that students who do not have disabilities have a right to access charter schools. There are situations where students do, and we talked about this with boundary changes, where students don't attend their attendance area school either, based on a significant level of need. So that would be kind of a parallel situation in the charter school, which I wouldn't consider counseling out. But certainly, prior to IEP discussions, prior to disability discussions, talking about a student's sort of overall needs or profile being too hard for the charter to handle would in fact be very inappropriate.
Mr. Doran?
Through the chair to follow up, I think it's a good point of raising a potential concern for liability. But to the administration, could you address that in the context of what we're putting here that we're covered? What's the difference in terms of, let's say, a parent raising that issue with a charter school versus a neighborhood school? How we would, you know, does it put us in a greater bind potentially? Or are we pretty well-covered so far, as best we can tell?
There's a lot in that question that I might have.
And you have two hours?
Help me out to start with, but, or right after I mentioned something, I guess. I do think this is a good addition to the contract. We're starting to get to the point where we're trying to clarify roles and responsibilities. In the past, it had been truly what's happened historically. It's been word of mouth. And so I think codifying some of these things in a contract is a great first step forward. In terms of covering all liabilities with special education, I think that's a tricky thing to do. But I'll kind of hand that over to Kate in terms of her thinking around charter versus neighborhood school and where you want to go with that.
And I would say that really the financial responsibility of staffing is what we're trying to... Staffing and materials and equipment is what we're trying to codify. I think it is, I hope, again, principals would agree with me. I think that we have been very good partners with our charter schools and would continue to be such. I don't, when my phone rings, I don't say, oh, that's a charter school principal. I'll put it at the bottom of my list. I pick up my phone in the same way that I always would. If there is a concern, we provide support in the same ways that we would to neighborhood schools. We've had emergency certified special education teachers at a couple of our charters this year and last year that the department has provided the necessary support. We've made sure that the funding is available to have certified special education endorsed teachers that are there consistently. Questions related to sort of preaddressing issues that are similar to what Ms. Hardy's talking about have gone through the department's special education legal council in the same ways that we would with neighborhood schools. So I wouldn't say that it creates a greater risk than any other school. It's just a matter of being super clear in terms of responsibility so that, you know, if it's an expectation that there's 20 assistive technology devices in that building, that the school is working towards getting the assistive technology devices that they need based on the funding that they have. In the interim, will assistive technology devices get into the hands of kids? Most certainly. But we want to make sure that... The way that I look at it is we want to make sure we're being fair to our neighborhood schools also. Everything that is spent through the special education department into a charter school is money that's being diverted away from other students in neighborhood schools. And so being fair and clear about where that money's going and not that the charter school kids deserve less or different, but who's responsible to pay for what? And then making sure that principals understand, you know, if I've been asked, how would you staff my school if it was a neighborhood school? I've given that advice. I would have this amount of staff or this secretary here or a paraprofessional here and those sorts of things. So it's really kind of advice and communication, I guess, is... I don't think it opens more liability necessarily than the liability that exists in our other campuses.
Follow up?
Follow up, Mr. Doran?
Okay. I really appreciate, you know, that we're getting this in writing, and it's clarifying those understandings. And I look to the principals, charter school principals here that, you know, it's in line with that. I think you've been part of the conversation. And just so I understand it for the listening public on it, is if there was an issue for a child and their services and their attendance at the school, whether it's charter or neighborhood or magnet, whatever type of school we have, you would work with them very much in the same way, just as if in a, as a principal, I may say, with an out-of-attendance area student, oh, well, you're not, you know, we work closely. And you, and if an MDR was taking place and it was determined that was part of their disability, if it was a behavior thing, part of their disability, either putting new steps in place under the IEP or looking at whether the most appropriate placement. So it's the same way as you would be working with any principal at any school in the best interest of the students.
I would say identically on that front end, where I would say it potentially differs is not all charter schools, in fact, I kind of think none of the charter schools choose to fund counselors or fund behavior interventionists. Or some of the things that we see as standard boilerplate interventions at a neighborhood school, we can help meet that gap for the remainder of a school year for specific situations. But it would be my expectation that if a school sees that significant behaviors are a need, they should be choosing to use funding to address that significant need rather than rely on district funds for the long term. So short-term, identical. Long-term wouldn't be that the special ed department says, we're going to fund two extra paraprofessionals, but rather, we're going to recommend that you have two extra paraprofessionals work to get that sorted through your budget.
Thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate the administrative response.
Mrs. Hardy?
I appreciate that, too. And the idea that it's an IEP team that determines needs drive services, what those services are, and then it is on the charters to staff for those students' needs, even if it's not something you traditionally offer. If this is your child or that child's least restrictive environment, it is the school's obligation to meet what the IEP team decides is needed. And that's the same standard that our neighborhood schools are held to, not a Cadillac, but a... I know that's...
And, you know, I'll give props to the charter principals. We've had, there is two students that come to mind this year that are high school kids, so it will be obvious where they are attending school, that are extremely high needs, that had left our district for a period of time and were returning. They had previously been in programs when they were in our district in their original enrollment. And enough time had passed that we felt a parent's request to look at something different was reasonable, and that school and staff didn't blink an eye. They made it happen, and in my understanding, it is successful. And so I don't want to paint the picture that our charter schools are somehow pushing special needs students out either. That's 100% not the case. This is really just an effort to take what we're already doing, codify it so it's clear when charters develop their budgets and... we're already doing, codify it so it's clear when charters develop their budgets, and codify it so that it's clear as I'm developing and you're developing department budget.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hardy.
Very good point. I'm not, definitely, I love my charter school and I love all of our charter schools. It's also partly for the public because I've received numerous emails that say that like, if you have an IEP, you can attend a charter. You definitely can. And they offer the same services. But assistive technology, you mentioned, do our charter schools have funds put away for purchasing of those? Because I know that that's maybe a newer thing. And are we helping them get in on our purchase orders and start so as before they go into this next school year? I know there was a delay in a lot of charter school students getting their assistive technology on time. And it's a small department and we keep cutting. But is there a way that we can smooth it out so next year that goes better? So assistive tech is in kids' hands at the start of the year?
And that's, again, you know, if we're trying out assistive tech, if we're looking to see if that's something that's necessary, us using some level of, of district assistive tech to fill that gap is perfectly appropriate. When we've moved into a new school year and we know that there's assistive tech written into IEPs, it would be the expectation that that technology is purchased by the school. Again, there is, there is no funding that flows through our department to make those purchases. We, the, I think right now, we have 20 devices that are at charter schools. It, for, I, I believe there are only two of our elementary schools that have more devices in a single school than some of our charters. And so it's, it is a, it's, it's a heavy-use area. We, our assistive technology support is there for consultation and assessment and recommendation, but not to provide continuous support and continuous equipment to the students at charter schools. So if that needs to be happening faster, that should be that the school understands what the need is that's in the IEPs that were written at that school prior to the year beginning. And the, the delay this year, we had made an agreement that if we had devices that were sitting on a shelf, I would rather them be sitting in the hands of a student than sitting on a shelf. So at the point that we'd rolled out devices to neighborhood schools, if there were extras, that we would distribute those. And to your point related to DHH earlier, similarly, we have an FM system that is at one of our private schools right now, under the same agreement, that essentially, we have an extra one that is sitting in a closet and you need it, please use it, knowing that you have to give it back to us the day we need it. And so, similar, it needs to be in the hands of kids.
Can I redirect? It was more, is there a way that our charters now, since we're ending the end of the year and they know their IEP needs, can get in on ordering those devices? Sometimes there are specific equipment that's unique and you already have suppliers and all of that, so that they can have those things purchased and ready for student use at the start of next school year?
If there is that need, I would recommend that they write to, Hillary Turner, the assistant director, works with the assistive technology group. And so, an email to she and Misha Brenner-Gelvin is our assistive technology teacher. And those purchases also, I mean, it's a little bit of a, a long hierarchy because ultimately, it flows into overall district technology because there's only certain types of iPads that we support and that sort of thing. So it rolls up to, I suppose, Paul and Tony.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing. Back to you, Mrs. Gillum.
Thank you so much, President Burnett. I'm going to comment on one other thing that was in this first item in the agenda that Dr. Minert mentioned. That's the policy revision that we would like to consider. I think we did a report on this in January, I believe, is when I pulled it out. So the, both included in the packet was our current policy that requires the annual contract and the annual presentation to the board. The revised contract would be a five-year contract between the charter school and the board, that of course, then could be revised at the request of either party. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that again. That is a policy that we would like to move through your policy process with a first reading and a second reading this year, if possible.
Mr. Dorn?
I'm not sure which, you're including both the policy and the, and concern area in the contract. So let me make an observation with the policy. The question there that I really would like us, before it comes back to us, suggests that the administration look at maybe making a distinction in that policy between a charter, the charter and contract. I think many people reading that get confused. And I've heard a lot of conversation, we've actually had testimony, that is confused, what's a contract, what's the contract versus what's, and, and over the years. So if we could, it might be another sentence in there to clarify that. And coming to the contract, not the charter, on number 16, the term there. I had a question, and I, I was not here for the January conversation afterwards when I found, if you could just, why five, I, I was looking at three years in my own mind, but why, why five versus three? And then I have a related question to that.
Dr. Minert?
Did you want me to speak to it, or? Yeah. More from an efficiency standpoint, plus, as we look around the state, it is pretty common to have five-year charter contracts. But definitely, anything more than the, you know, three, I think we would also be agreeable to. Being more efficient than the yearly contracts, having to come back year after year, is really what we're trying to get at.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
And, and I definitely agree with that. It's been very complicating over the years, doing it every year. So being longer, I don't have a, and, and this can be changed on a regular, if something comes up, you know, so. But I just wanted to know what the rationale was. The related question is, in the term section, section 16, could you clarify the score, the school board will review the agreement every year? And I like the idea that the agreement is going to, even though it's good for five years, you're looking at it, we've had enough changes in charter school law regulations. We may have more on the horizon. That was one reason why I was thinking three than five, you know, it doesn't really matter. But what does that mean in reviewing it? I'm thinking the review is more an administrative review. And is, this is an implication that when the board reviews it, they will make a decision, which gets us back to an annual conversation? If you could just explain that.
So what I'm, to cap, to capture what I'm hearing you say is that the preference could be to change number 16 of the term, which we had drafted this before. I just realized, number 16, we had drafted this contract when we were hoping that policy would change this year. So for this contract, it would be a term of one year. And what I'm hearing you say, Mr. Dorn, is that the preference would be to change the language to say, administration will review this agreement every year? In terms of the language of the contract?
Well, I'm looking for why the choice of this. My, my concern is whether we're back to the board doing an annual kind of approval, if it's, slides us back into an annual approval by the board, which has been, what has been complicated over the years. And, and this has been in quite a number of years. That, that's been an issue, so.
Mr. Dorn, I, I agree with where you're going. I would not be opposed to having it say, administration will review the agreement between contract renewals, if the board would be amenable to that. And Dr. Minert? And we'll change, before we do the official, the contracts, I think will come before the board in May. So we'll change number 16 so that it says that this agreement will be for a term of one year, since that is still policy language.
Mr. Dorn?
Okay. So one is, I'm concerned that it's not just my idea, that if there's some feeling from the board, others, how they want to weigh in. But we're also seeing that the contract for the 25, 26 year will be a one-year. Is there a reason we can't get to the five-year if that's, so we don't have to redo it again next year?
Yes.
We could certainly do that. What would need to happen is bringing policy, first reading and second reading prior to contracts. But part of the conversation tonight was just feeling out where the board was at with that idea. And so, we could certainly do that prior to approval of charter contracts.
I'm seeing some head nods from the board. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
So my question is on number 16 as well. And I don't know if, I just want to clarify this. So it, if we were to change it to the agreement, the term of the agreement would be five years, then it says the school board will review this agreement, is it every year? So is it a standard procedure that every charter is reviewed on an annual basis, first of all?
Based upon our current policy, yes, that is the current practice. And charters would still have to submit a, an annual report for review, which is what we'll move into after this. I also was going to say charter principals, if at any point in time you wanted to raise your hand to...
I will recognize you to speak. No?
I wasn't saying no about that. I mean, sorry.
You may raise your hands.
Let me hop in here. So that language in 16 does need to be cleaned up. It's conflicting between the five years, which we had changed earlier in the year because we were thinking we were getting to that policy revision. We pulled the policy revision off of the board's calendar and so haven't cleaned up that language. In the policy revision, we did not continue to require charter schools to provide an annual review. And hearing the board talk about having school highlights, moving more to that for all of our schools, so providing one-pagers, and I would imagine we'd be on kind of like a two- or three-year rotation for schools in terms of highlighting them. And so charter schools would just be like our neighborhood schools in terms of providing that update to the board. And so, that's where we were hopeful in going with that.
Thank you, Dr. Minert. Anything further from the board? Mr. Dorn?
Just for clarification, the contract, the, the charter is for 10 years. That does not come back to us for 10 years. And we keep going back and forth, and the contract is different. And I'd love to see a multi-year.
Go ahead, Ms. Gillum.
I think that wraps up unless there's any other feedback or questions from the board regarding the policy. The next piece that we're going to move into is just the annual presentations by charter schools, if we're ready for that.
We are ready for that.
First in the agenda is watershed. I know that's not alphabetical, but that was the first one in the agenda.
We don't follow rules around here.
And I'm going to air tame for you, Principal Decker, if you want it shared on the board, perhaps?
Oh.
Do you want it presented? I will do it for you. Yes, yes. Okay, got it. Nope, you stay right there. Yeah?
Unless you have APC members with you.
Oh, I suppose if you wanted to go sit.
And then why don't you move down there with them?
It's what happens when you assume you're last. Okay, looks like we're pulled up. Yep.
Principal Decker, would you like to introduce yourself and who you brought with you today?
Hello, my name is Jared Decker. I'm the principal at Watershed Charter School, and I am here with our APC Chair, Sina Gilbert. And I was expecting to go last, and I was going to follow the flow of what everybody else did. So I'll just, I will do my best to keep this very, very brief. It's a new format for the one-page report. I put our vision on there. I did not put our mission on there because our mission is very, very long and is being revised right now as part of our strategic plan process. I put school statistics in that have traditionally been asked about by the school board. Data highlights quickly. I'm using last year's AK-Star and Science results because we are still in the AK-Star and window. In fact, I was doing makeup testing today. I put M-class reading scores from last year because, again, we are, we just entered that testing window. And then to give you a little bit more current, I threw in a winter-to-winter MAP growth. So comparing December 2023 to December 2024 growth, as far as our, as far as our, as far as the growth our students made in reading, language, usage, and math. And then, Sina, would you like to talk about the APC goals?
APC this year attended a two-day workshop along with many of our other charter school leadership components. It was great, presented by the AASB. We also are in process, well, we have completed actually, and presented the draft of our strategic plan to our school community. And then are in process for finalizing the specific objectives of our new goals. And lastly, we are finishing the year by reviewing bylaws and our school dress code as our APC for this year.
Fantastic. Any questions from the board? Mr. Dorn?
Okay, so you don't feel left out. Could you just give us, I know the strategic plan is in, still in the draft, and your goals are in the draft, but could you give us just a sense of what the goals are looking like, shaping up to be, or?
Can I grab my laptop?
That's fine with me.
While she does that, the goals, the strategic plan, I, it's, we're looking at rewriting our mission so it's more concise, something that, yeah, something that's more concise and memorable, something that we can, that we can all be held accountable to. It identifies core values. When, we went through a process to identify the values that, yeah, our core values. It also identifies three pillars, including academics, stewardship, and personal and community well-being.
Thank you, Sina.
You're welcome. The new watershed mission will be cultivating personal and academic growth through place-based learning and outdoor exploration. As Principal Decker mentioned, we have academics talking about our project-based units and using technology as a tool, not necessarily the curriculum. We have our stewardship pillar that focuses on ecological responsibility, service learning projects, local community connections, and then the personal and community well-being, looking at some of that social, emotional component, class size, goals, and our learning spaces.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just make the observation. I appreciate that you have that draft and the process right in the doors. People come in so that your whole community can see it. So thanks for undertaking that and for sharing it.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Hi. I have not been to your school yet. So can you just, for the sake of my sanity, would you explain to me place-based learning and how that looks at your school?
I'm going to give you the very short version because I can get real nerdy about place-based that. So place-based that is just really focusing on teaching students the relevant and the local before we expand to the abstract and the global. So we want, my, my kind of cliche-ish answer, because I give it way too often, is a student can't understand the workings of the rain, the Amazonian rainforest until they have a solid understanding of the ecology and the boreal forest in their backyard. And so they have to understand the, to, if they have a solid understanding of the history of Alaska and the Tannenaw Valley, they're going to have a better time understanding... and the Tannenaw Valley, they're going to have a better time understanding the founding of America and global events when they're, when they're older.
Thank you. That was a good canned answer. I like it. So I was hoping kind of that that's what you were going to say. Your scores from last year are very impressive. Congratulations to you guys for last year because 35% is outstanding. And I just, as a reading literacy person, I'm looking at the beginning of the year at 58% in the, in the orange and loving the 22% at the very end. So knowing that you are computer-free and you don't have your data, any idea what that looked like when your kids came back to school in the fall?
I've heard Mr. Beam talk about this just district-wide too, that, that we noticed that students held on to the progress that they made over the school year. And so we, we definitely noticed the bump, especially with our third graders. Yeah, especially with our third graders.
Nice, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Anything further from the board at the moment? So we are short a couple of members, one who is out sick. And I promised her that I would ask this question of all APC or all principals of our charter schools. So, you know, kind of lame that you get to go first because you could have sat on this one for a minute. But her question is, what from your school could be expanded at neighborhood schools?
That is a great question. I don't mind being put on the spot. All right. I don't think, I think that it is really important for our schools to be engaged in the community. So I'm going to highlight this, I'm using this as a segue to brag about, I'm going to use it to brag about two of my, two of our classes. Our fifth grade class spends a day every month at the Pioneer Home, working on a service learning project with the residents there. And it costs nothing. I mean, it costs a bus, which is very, very cheap. And we use district charter buses to get there and back. So, and then it, and then we have, our kindergarten is in charge of our school-wide, you know, our school-wide recycling program. They made presentations to every classroom, including a great skit on what can and cannot be recycled. And then they are also partnering with Green Star. And they, so the benefit is twofold. So we are providing, so yes, we are providing some sort of service to the greater community, but the community then becomes so important to what we are trying to do. And we can, and what we're, what we're doing there is we're showing our, our students that school isn't just a book that, and a textbook that you are working on or a project that you're working on from 8:30 to 3:00, that it expands out to life beyond the walls. And I think that's something that all schools could be doing more of.
Great answer. Thank you so much. Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, thank you, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, and thank you, Ms. Gilbert, for the pivot to go first like that. Next in the agenda list is Effie Cochrane. I know. Thank you, Principal Snow, and then if you brought...
Mr. Snow is ready.
He's ready. He already knows the last question too. And this is, I mean, perhaps a shorter, you guys have heard from Mr. Snow.
Can I do it? I want to do that. I have very little to say because you've seen me so many times this year. I just wanted, because they all say I talk too much when I come to board presentations. So I wanted to be, so I'll just introduce myself for the record. I'm Josh Snow. I'm the principal at Effie Cochrane and our junior high APC teacher rep Bennett Wong, who's also my admin intern all year, which has been a huge plus. But actually, seriously, I was going to really say it's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of collaboration with both the district and the board this year. And it culminated with a successful state Board of Education meeting in March. So the charter has been renewed, which is very exciting for another 10 years. And really just open it up to questions because you have heard a lot from us this year.
Much appreciated. Mr. Snow, do we have questions from the board? Mr. Dorn?
Could you talk a little bit, because in some ways your school is a little bit different than many in that you have students who may come and go. Or if they realize that they're not being as successful as they might be in, in a different school setting, they've joined your school because, partially because of the cultural aspects, the smallness, those types of things. But, and maybe if I'm wrong, let me know, but I do believe you have a little bit more of those dynamics working with families and recommendations from families specifically for what you offer the Effie students.
And again, I'll try to, I'll keep this very brief, but I'll use an example probably to capture that the best. Had a grandmother approach me this spring and her granddaughter was now living with her, who had been in Galena and then moved to Nynana to the boarding school, been unsuccessful at both places. And we had taught a number of her children and also lots of connections to this grandmother. So she comes in and it's literally middle of April. And she says, I want to enroll my daughter at Effie. And she basically has not had any success during this ninth grade or 10th grade of high school. And so we visited and I met the granddaughter and I had her share with me, we did a records request. And I basically saw what I thought I would see, but we realized that she had done enough in two different classes over the course of the year that we could potentially work out some kind of an arrangement where she could finish these two classes this year. So what she's doing now is she comes in on a Monday and Grandma brings her in. And myself and our math, science teacher meet with her and we set, basically we lay out what the assignments are for the week and the student goes home, checks in with us once during the week and then brings in the next round. And I said, we'll know right away if this is going to work or not. And we're on week three and she's just cranking right along. And so I believe we will end the school year and rather than having zero credits to show for a very challenging year, she should have Earth Science and Algebra I done because she had gotten far enough along and will likely enroll as a full-time student at Effie next year because she's going to stay living with Grandma. So I think that really perfectly kind of captures a student. She at one point had been in the district, moved back out to rural Alaska, came back in. So that's an answer to that question.
Any other questions from board members? Mrs. Hardy?
More of a statement. I've gotten to be around a bunch of Effie students, both in student council meetings, that was the table I sat with, and then just out in the community. And prevailing theme is just how much they love their school. I have not met a student at Effie, even, there's a lot of families that come from Boreal Sun to Effie, and so we see them, who don't just say how much they love being at Effie. And I think that speaks volumes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. I actually want to echo that sentiment, throwing myself in here. Mr. Snow, I came and bombarded you. I bombarded you with one of our representatives and it, first off, Prox doesn't stop talking about his visit to Effie. I just want you to know that. Like it's literally when I was in Juneau and we started talking about our schools, that was the one thing he kept taking to everybody was his visit at Effie. So it was such a special moment that you even have somebody in Juneau who touts how great Effie Cochrane is. Another thing you did when I came to visit was, you know, I go to schools and I get a, and this is not a knock. I absolutely love the tour that I get by principals and being shown around. But you went a step further and you had a couple of students that actually showed me around. And I thought that was so cool because not only was I getting that perception of the school, you know, with the tour and how great it is, but I was having the students show me how great their school is. And that just was icing on the cake. And so it just shows the special things that you do there at Effie and how much I enjoyed it there. And with that, that leads me to the question that I had got to ask Mr. Decker. And that comes from Mrs. Julian. And just, you know, what from your school, and I think I probably know the answer to this, but I'm going to let you answer it, but what from your school could be taken to any of our neighborhood schools?
Actually, I bet I might surprise you. So I actually think that our collaboration with Fairbanks Native Association could be duplicated across high schools. Because so many of their programs are actually available to the general community and that's one of the things that's not really well-known. And in particular, the behavioral health services that we access. I've spoken this before about how we actually have clinicians come into Effie to do their sessions and we have a whole referral process. And, and I think we can serve as a model for, for that being built out. And I think principals at other high schools would be very, very open to that. So that would be, that would be my one. And Bennett, you want to give one? So something, yeah.
Yeah, I could probably add quite a bit, actually. Josh and I have quite a bit of conversations about this. And, you know, when Superintendent Minert came and visited, I shared with him, you know, something that's kind of grown on me, this perspective this year, is how special, what a special school we have at Effie Cochrane. The integration of elders in our classrooms, having, you know, this is a person who the students can feel comfortable with, they share their experiences, you know, when there's differences in, or from students coming from one village to another. And we can say that cultural ties definitely stem, you know, amongst many different communities. It's, you know, I think that to me is something that could be replicated in other schools. And, you know, if anything, I would, I would like to see that pursued in a place like Fairbanks where there's such a, like, you know, Mr. Dorn was sharing, such a transient population, especially within the interior where we can have elders share their expertise with the students. Not only that, but also comfort, their culture, their stories, their food. And it just makes, you know, it's like place-based, we, we teach place-based in a, in a different way. And it's, I think it's something that could definitely be replicated.
Excellent, thank you. That was a surprise. I did not expect that answer. That, that's amazing. Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Snow, Mr. Wong.
Oh, sure, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You see us all the time.
Next on the agenda is Principal Pitt and Discovery Peak.
Good evening. I'm Nathan Pitt, principal at Discovery Peak. And I actually have two APC board members with me, President Christopher Smades and a newer member, the newest member, Nicole Doyle is here with us as well. So last year, this was my, my first year at Discovery Peak and first year having one of these reports and, and presenting it. And with the data piece, I really struggled because most of the data that I had didn't look very rosy. And I'd, I'd come from schools where, where we had really nice data, right? And so I was, I had to really kind of dig. And we did have good growth. There was growth that I could share. But I wanted those hard numbers that really showed, showed achievement rising. And we got that this year, much more. So we don't have our AK-Star data back yet, but we're able to quickly see MAP scores compared from last year. And there's a huge jump. Like you've got this little quadrant graph where you can see achievement plotted on this coordinate plane. And I clicked to last year and all those dots for every grade scoot back. And you click, and I, I made a little GIF and I sent it to the staff too. And I was like, this is what we did. So the one that's most stark, so I'm jumping right into this good news right here. That's on the, that's on the right-hand side. The one that's most noticeable is literacy. And we expected that to happen, right? Success isn't accidental. We didn't stumble into that. And really across the district, this was already brought up, really across the district, you know, third grade saw a leap. With that intentional work on Walk to Read across the district, we saw it in our data where we looked at MAP scores and we saw, third grade was an outlier. Like it just popped up past all of the other grades. We had MAP data for it because it's only third through eighth in our school. And we're like, okay, so that's working. Let's apply that everywhere else. So we got to work doing that. And just the, the focus on that, the work that we did around intentional work, trying to say, what could we do differently? What could we do better? Nothing magical, right? We're not overhauling a curriculum. In fact, last year we started with HMH. We were, we were able to get the thank you chain for helping make that happen for Discovery Peak. A lot of early career teachers were relieved to have curriculum materials that they could use and weren't having to just develop their own. So that was, that was huge as well. We're, we're starting to see the move in math as well. Something that we realized earlier in the year, actually, we were, I think it came up at a meeting where Jared was, where Jared had mentioned, you know, we haven't had training, we both use Singapore math as our curriculum materials. Said, we haven't had training in Singapore math for a few years. And so a lot of the staff haven't had that training. And there were a few staff sitting at the table with me, you might have been there too, who, who said, oh, we haven't had training either, Nathan. So we have training coming this fall that we're working together. And we're actually working with Boreal Sun too, as they're also starting with Singapore math. So we're really excited about that to help staff get the skills that they need. I, I want to share too, I, I put one photo in there partly as a filler and I felt like it needed a little bit of color. One of the things that we, we wanted to do as a, as a staff and as a school was to get our kid, we're already a school of movement, you know, you hear that a lot about us, right? But our skis had not been used very much. They didn't get used at all last year. We just kept trying to, okay, how can we make sure our kids are getting outside? Let's use that tool that we have. And, and I realized at one point, again, this goes back to our, our math training as well. A lot of staff hadn't been skiing or hadn't been skiing in so long that they were uncomfortable. So we got some skis and we got everyone on the skis and scooted around, just around the building a few times. And most of the kids have been outside now skiing. Not, not now, we're done with the skis for the season thing. But what a difference that made. And I think that helped all of us realize like, okay, there's these things that we need to do together. You talk about shared efficacy. Well, that was a great tangible lesson in that. And then I'll just share APC and strategic goals. I'll just kind of gloss over and say that we're, our APC is relatively new. I mean, our school is new, right? So we're sixth year in existence, my second year at the school. And the APC is almost completely different than when I arrived. So one of the super tangible things we're doing, a little bit dry, but I think really good, is just looking at our bylaws, like how do we operate, getting back down to those bare bones. And that's actually led to really... And that's actually led to really, really good, powerful conversations about who we are and how we operate, even at that level, right? And heard about strategic planning. We're not ready to jump on that yet, right? We're still pretty new. We're still almost in startup mode. But we're starting to look at that. And as we get more cohesive as a, as a school and as an APC, we're really excited about working together. And I'll just, if either of you would want to share anything about that process or as we're going forward.
Yeah, I'll talk, yeah, I'll talk just a little bit on that. Main thing we're trying to do with our bylaws is just try to re, not so much change anything, but restructure it to follow the ASB format. And this is actually the bylaws committee right here. So every now and then, we will, we try to do it at least once a month where we get together and we go through a section and read the way the ASB has it written, and then read the way we have ours written, and tailor it to more fit what image we are trying to portray on that.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Dorn.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of quick things. You mentioned you finished your AK-Star now, and that's why you got the MAP score so quickly?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's a testament of the intent to get those right away to have. Could you, my other question is in the area of, one of the linchpins for Discovery Peak was, is the AR Accelerated Reader Program. Could you talk about how that plays a part in your literacy, especially as we have some more of the REEDS Act and guidance, stronger guidance from Department of Education, the Alaska Department of Education, and how they are complementing each other? Where is that at?
Yeah. It's not a core part of our literacy approach, but we do use AR as an incentive. We do have time for students to be reading in school and earning AIR points. We have incentives. It's not the, it's not the core literacy time that we have. We celebrate it, we encourage it, we have classroom libraries, and we counsel students to find books that they love and try to really make sure that students have that love of reading, along with just being good readers and reading for information, as well as, you know, great fiction books.
All right.
And not to get too into detail depth, but just when Discovery Peak, seven years ago, was applying, and AR was, as I said, a linchpin, it was one of the two that, and physical, and the physical movement, which I know, and I like to track upstairs as well as what's going on outside watching the kids. The, your renewal coming up fairly soon, a few more years, but coming up. I'm just seeing what the trajectory, and also because there are things that have changed in what companies are being able to support and offer, something like that. Is that in part of your strategic planning goals, pieces you go through things?
I'd say it'll certainly come up in strategic planning, like, looking at where, even last year, we were starting to have some conversations about what different directions we might take, and it was, instead of rewrite the whole charter or contract, it was, okay, let's stay the course, because we have enough things solid that we can work on and work with now. We don't want to throw everything out. But at some point, we're gonna open up a little bit more and say, what do we really want our school, what do we need our school to be for our students to be great learners and stewards in community?
And I had one more.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
Just for the public's reference to iXL, could you just explain? And I think that's a relatively new piece that you brought in, so could you talk about that?
Yeah. I'm not one to say that a program or a piece of technology fixes anything, but we saw some great success with a technology tool called iXL, which really helps to target skills. We were using it particularly in math. So having students working with Singapore math, there were, and students coming to us from different schools and just different places around the world, right? As people PCS and come in and leave, and quite a bit of transancy. We found that we had a lot of students that were, had a lot of holes, especially in math. And there was a teacher that had great success with using this tool, iXL, this software program that can just target skills. And so the other teacher, seeing the success there, said, can we get that, too? I looked at it, we did a trial, and we started seeing success there, really for that tactical honing in on skills. So it's not, it's not a curriculum, it's not what's teaching kids, it's not what they're doing all class period, it's part of what they do, along with their deeper thinking of mathematics, they're also having some of that skill-building time. And it's, it can do things, like, it takes those MAP scores, which can tell us what standards they're weak on, and then give them more skill-building activities in that. So it's some, some great things like that where it actually works well with the other data that we get, along with the data that iXL generates.
Thank you, and I
Supplemental, yes.
And I just wanted to say, I mean, talking to a couple of your teachers about it and how they were using it to improve their instruction and their class learning activities was very great. Thank you for explaining that.
Mrs. Hardy.
Again, more of a statement, but it's not on your sheet, is that you guys are also a Purple Star school, and you have a very high military. I was actually kind of shocked. I knew it was harder, but you're at, like, 43% of your students are military-connected, and you're one of only two charters in our district that has that distinction. And I know that took extra effort, and so I really appreciate that your school went through that effort, and I know those military students appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate you on your growth and for just identifying, like, the iXL, and then, and then just expanding that. I mean, when you see something that works and you jump on it and you do it, you use it, and it works well, that's exciting stuff. I'm also, just want to congratulate you and Watershed and Boreal Sun for collaborating on the math training. And I am, like, excited, I cannot wait to hear from you next year about the growth in your numbers. So really take note of where you guys are now, because I'm excited to see this huge leap forward. As a former math teacher, man, I am like, yay! So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Any other questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, so that will bring, did you have one, Mrs. Hardy? No, I'm not forgetting. For Mrs. Julian, her question is, what from your school could be expanded at neighborhood schools?
I think we kind of all thought this was kind of an easy one. So I remember being a principal 10 years ago, in a different school, district, different school, and teachers coming to me the first few months of school and, like, asking, can we take our kids outside for this? And I was like, yeah, like, get outside, what are you doing? And having to try to build that culture of, let's make sure kids are moving, if we can do stuff outside, let's be outside. And walking into Discovery Peak, that was already kind of there, so I didn't need to build it. But even today, going around the building and giving a few nudges for things that, and there were teachers that were already like, I changed my plans today, we're gonna do this thing, we're gonna go outside and gather these things instead of around the school. Hey, I'm doing a read aloud, but can I do it outside? Of course. Most of them didn't ask, because I think we have that, we have that understanding. So having been, taking anything you can outside, but then also that movement piece. There's so many ways to build movement in, and of course, it's part of our, the fabric of our school, right? Where we're always kind of thinking that way. Teachers amaze me, and other staff amaze me in ways, innovative ways they come up with to keep the kids moving, engaged, and thinking and learning.
Thank you. Perfect answer. I love it. Anything further from the board? Not seeing anything at this time. Thank you, guys, so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitt, thank you, Mr. Smade, and thank you, Mr. Smades, Smades, Ms. Doyle. Next on the agenda, brings us to Chinook Charter School. Ms. Carlson, if you're ready?
I'm just gonna stay in my seat, because I am all by myself. So Chinook is a school of choice, or this is our mission statement. We strive to create a dynamic educational environment which fosters educational excellence and cultivates personal, intellectual, and emotional growth and responsibility through a Montessori philosophy. So Montessori is an educational method that cultivates independence, lifelong learning, and respect for self and others. We're nurturing the whole child. We, at our school, we begin with concrete experiences using Montessori materials in the early years, and then gradually introduce more abstract concepts in the older grades. And then our foundational aspects are listed in our one-pager, so respect for children as unique individuals, we collaborate with families and community. We want to foster independence and intrinsic motivation, have a peaceful and caring environment, hands-on learning with Montessori materials, organized environment with high-quality work. We have 14 staff members, and half of them have been at Chinook for 10 years. Next year, we're going to, I've hired two new middle-school teachers. So that's, next year will be a learning experience for all of us. Our APC is made up of four staff and three parents. There's currently an election going on for one of our parent seats, and we will, the board, the APC will have to, one person is resigning at the end of this year, because her daughter is moving on to high school, so we'll have, they'll have to seat somebody. Highlights for them, we're formalizing a complaint resolution guide, and it's displayed at the front of our school, so all families can see it, and it's also available on Parent Square. They updated the attendance policy, and they are going to start working on strategic planning for next year. The testing data over at number two, I made a mistake, so I took our Alaska Science Assessment from the spring, spring '24, so that is correct, but the growth, it should say, spring 2024 to spring 2025, because it is spring 2025 right now. So for reading and language usage, 59% had average or above for their growth, and math was about, well, was 48%. And, yeah, just some highlights from the year. We did quite a few whole-school events. We went and watched The Wild Robot, because that is a read aloud in our apprentice, our first, second, and third-grade class, taking 150 students to the movie theater and getting snack packs. It's an adventure, but worth it. The Big Dipper's pretty close to us, so we, and we have a school-wide buddy program, so we started doing skating buddies, so we, students would walk to the Dipper and go ice skating and get picked up there. And we got to go watch the start, restart of the Iditarod. And if you guys haven't played Gaga Ball before, I recommend it. Gaga Ball.
Thank you so much. All right, do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Dorn.
Thank you for that presentation. Clarification on the testing data.
Yeah.
That results from '23, '24 to '25. Is that the proficiency level, or is that actually the growth?
Growth.
So it changed from the, over the year, 59% of your students showed growth. They moved from below proficient to above proficient, or?
Meeting. No, I looked at the number of students that, just looking at their growth. I don't know how else to explain it. So it's not, I didn't look at just proficiency there, so we can look at proficiency, but we can look at growth.
Below.
Ms. Gillum?
So in MAP, because I'm assuming, Ms. Carlson, that that's MAP data, MAP, because it's a national test, they provide measures of what would be average growth for students based upon their norm referencing. So I'm making an assumption, because this is a metric that MAP will provide for you of if students are meeting their growth targets. So it'll set growth targets for students. If we anticipate from fall to winter, you will grow this much, from winter to spring, you will grow this much. So those are, that's showing that 59% of the students reached their average or above-average growth target that they were hoping to meet for that year, for that timeframe of the test.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the, just, so I understand, so the, the test data on the science assessment, that's from the Alaska test, but the growth one is MAP, not AK-Star?
Correct.
And do you have an idea of your AK-Star?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, all right.
Mrs. Hardy.
Similar veins. Congratulations, because I believe this is the first time your school has earned the Purple Star Award. And I looked it up, and it says you actually have a relatively low military-connected population, so that's even more impressive that you went through the effort for, you know, those under-10 students that really benefit from that, and just making it so that any new students have that already in place for the infrastructure. And I have another one, but I can wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay. And this one, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. So could you tell me more about your school's policies around keeping children in from recess due to not finishing their academic work?
That was a big discussion that our APC took on. So in the past, students were kept in from recess to finish work, and we no longer do that.
Really happy to hear that.
Yeah. It was great use of APC time and hearing complaints, we're not perfect, and like, we think our school and what kids are learning are, it's the most important thing, like, we're hung up in our little world, and it is good that parents feel comfortable enough to go to our APC and have great conversations and problems solved together.
Actually, a follow-up to the administration, since we had had a conversation earlier in the year around it, and once again, I won't be on the board, I really do think the board should reevaluate our recess policy, because all it simply says is recess is a valuable part, I mean, there's more to the one, but the only piece that pertains to this, is a valuable part of an elementary education. The amount of recess lost due to student discipline should be minimized, and I feel like all schools would benefit from more guidance.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hardy, for that. That was actually one of the policies that we had as a discussion item at our last policy committee meeting of the year, so I'm happy to report that we did discuss it at policy committee, and that was also the kind of collective feeling of the group, that there needed to be more guidance with that. So actually, Ms. Dillard is meeting with elementary principals tomorrow to start getting feedback and getting an understanding, because I think the feeling of, we, kids need recess, and often the students that most need recess need recess the most. I think I'll just say that. So yes, I would definitely say that it is a high priority for our administrative review, and we're working through that.
Thank you, Ms. Gillum. That's really great to hear. Mr. Dorn.
Coming back to the agenda, the question, could you just talk a little bit? You have different levels, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the terms, but also how you do mentoring. different levels, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the terms, but also how you do mentoring, not just for activities. And I saw a great example of it when they came to the concert the other day, your school with their mentors and little kids. But could you talk about that mentoring piece within your school?
Yeah, so our, it's a big question. So at our school, we have different names for each family group. So one family group is kindergarten and we call them novices. They're novices of the school. And then we have apprentices and that's first, second, and third grade, pioneers, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And then mentors are seventh and eighth grade, are middle schoolers. And they take on, we don't have a student government, but in my eyes, they are all student government. They're looking out for the little kids. Seventh graders are partnered with novices, the kindergartners for buddies. Eighth graders are working on a passage project where they're proving that they're ready for high school. And they take all sorts of, yeah, I rely on the mentors a lot. It's, on Fridays, we have reflective Fridays. So they're reflecting on a piece of work for their portfolio. And mentors also go and help in classrooms. Like, oh, I need this, I'm trying to work with this kid, but I'm also needing to do something on my computer. And it turns out that middle schoolers are sometimes more helpful than I am, working with kids that need a little extra support. They take out the trash because we don't have a day custodian and will tidy. And they're, yeah, they are wonderful humans and they're going to do great things in high school. They also go serve the community one Friday a month this year. They've been to the Pioneer Home, a preschool, the food bank, and a couple other places. I think our 45 middle schoolers have logged 600 hours this school year, serving the community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing. So that leaves me with my question for you from Mrs. Julian. What from your school could be expanded to neighborhood schools?
And I'm not going to say going out into the community like Watershed did.
Even though that's a good answer?
It is a good answer, but something different. Grace and courtesy lessons, it's a big part of the Montessori philosophy. So teaching them manners and care of your environment. Like, if you walk past something, you pick it up and make sure you push in your chair. Not that these things aren't taught at other schools, but we put a large emphasis on it. Our apprentice, first, second, and third graders are writing thank you notes right now. It's just on their practical life shelf. Kitchen skills, so they bring in class snack and they're helping cut it and serve it and write the note. You can have half a banana and crackers. Our novices, our kindergartners, practicing these skills all year long. And their culminating activity is going to a restaurant and ordering food and practicing their table manners. Pretty exciting.
I love that.
Yeah.
Mrs. Hardy?
Just something I was hoping too you'd touch on, because I've dabbled in the Montessori earlier with my own students. Montessori math manipulatives is something I've been saying we should see in our other schools. And I wasn't sure if you would support that or talk about what makes them so unique and helpful for students.
I think it would be great to see. It would be hard to integrate with like a specific math curriculum. Montessori doesn't have a math curriculum, which is also very difficult. But watching my six-year-old son pull out the nines chain and can count by nines, nine, eighteen, that's pretty, pretty cool. So it's laying a nice, solid foundation. But training is needed. So it could work with training.
Thank you so much. Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Ms. Carlson, that takes us to our last presentation, which is Principal Foshee with Boreal Sun and whoever else she may have brought with her.
Hello.
Before you get started, I gotta tell you, I really like your boots. No, that's out of the way. Go ahead.
About the fashion, right? So I have with me Heidi Collins. She is probably our newest member of the APC and she is also our handwork teacher at Boreal Sun. So the question at the end, she has some ideas about that. So, well, Boreal Sun has had a fabulous year. And I'll just tell you a little bit about, when we were asked to put our mission on our one-pager, I thought, oh no, that's going to take up the whole page. Because our mission is quite long. But I'll just read a little bit of it. But Boreal Sun Charter School provides K-8 students with cross-curricular arts-integrated program, inspired by the philosophy of Waldorf education. And state standards are met with a significant attention given to the developmental model of the unfolding child as practiced in the Waldorf philosophy. So that part right there, I think, is what really leads us every day in our work with our students. We have so many highlights this year. And Boreal Sun families, I put how many volunteer hours they had logged at the top of the one-pager. But since reporting that they had 2,065, it's actually gone up to 2,218.7. We're doing a project with our sixth graders where they have just learned about the Middle Ages and they've become squires. And they're working in order to accomplish different tasks, not only at home, but also at school. And one of the things at school that I, I also do lunch coverage in there. So I asked them if they would be interested in helping with the playground TLC project and working out there. And they were like all over that. That was so exciting for them. And can we do this? And can we do this? And can we build swings? So we asked for a lot of donations and help from our community. And the sixth graders have been working really hard to upgrade, make upgrades to the playground. So that's really exciting. Other things that we've seen this year, and one thing that's coming up, and we definitely want to invite all the executive directors and the board to be part of that, is that on, let's see, on May the 8th, we are inviting three Waldorf schools to come up and participate in the Pentathlon. And that is a fifth-grade event that we do wrestling, discus, stick throw, because our risk management said no to javelin. Long jump and running. So that will be May 8th from about 10 o'clock till 3:15 in the afternoon. And we're looking for judges. So if any of the executive directors or any of the board members would be interested, we'll send out a formal invitation for that. But we'd love to have you participate there. As Mr. Pitt mentioned, we're partnering with Watershed and with Discovery Peaks because our APC just adopted Dimensions Math from Singapore as our new curriculum next year, which we are very excited about. And some other things that we can highlight, our students have done a really great job of taking some responsibility custodial-wise in the school, helping out each day with taking the trash. They also raise the flag. And just, just all the time are coming around to do little things in the school to help out and be part of that. Our eighth graders have partnered with our first graders and they're reading buddies for them at least once a week. And then Boreal Sun was able to host an educator event with Kobe Sharp. He came to town and we set up our Great Hall, which is just a really inviting space and invited all the educators around the district to come and participate and learn from Mr. Sharp. It was a really successful event. And then also lots of different schools hosted Mr. Sharp at their schools as well. So we were happy to be part of that. Yeah, a little bit about our one-pager. So 90% of our families rated our school as an A or a B, which we were happy to hear. We're always loving to get feedback from our families. And then some of our testing results. So we weren't quite, when our one-pagers were due, our students weren't finished. We were still in the testing period. So they weren't quite finished. So we did use the 2024 Alaska Star Science results. And that showed that 57.9% of our students were proficient, at the proficiency level or above. And then our fall to winter this year for our math results showed that 73% of our students experienced growth at an average or above rate, similar to, I think, what Mrs. Carlson was saying. So we looked more at the growth percentages for our students and they showed some great growth there. One of the areas that I'd say that we're still working on is literacy. And I know that Mrs. Collins is one of the folks who stepped up. She went back and took the keys to literacy class so that she can be one of the teachers that works with our intervention groups. And another thing that we did this spring was the outside-of-the-day tutoring. We personally called every family to make sure that they felt invited and welcome to come to our tutoring sessions. And our percentage of students attending the outside-of-the-day tutoring really went up. And I, I hope that was a result of a personal invitation for them. So.
Okay, any questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you for that presentation. A couple of things. One, on the testing score results. One's the AK-Star Science, the other is MAP.
Yes.
Okay. And between the last two presentations on this, the wording, in terms of what that shows, and I guess you have the 2025 results now also?
We, we won't have 2025 AK-Star results until the fall.
Right, but the MAP scores, the spring MAP.
We just fetish up with the last of our folks that are doing makeup. So yes.
Okay, so you'll have that shortly. But I guess my question, what I'm getting confused about is, it's, it's like 73% in this case have experienced growth.
Growth.
But doesn't MAP also give us where they stand?
Yes.
And what I'm confused about is, well, that could be growth from far below to, or well below to below, but it doesn't really show where their levels are.
Right. You can look at it both ways. So you can look at it as the growth percentage that you see. And then you can look at it as where they are in the proficiency scale of below-average, proficient, above-average, advanced. I'm not, I'm not for sure. That's the wording that it uses.
So if I asked you about how much, what percentage are proficient or above?
I'd have to look that up.
Mr. Doran, Dr. Minor?
Mr. Doran, we can get that information out to the board for all of our charters in terms of where their actual proficiency levels are. Kind of in defense of charters and the rest of our schools, a lot of our goals for our school principals and our schools are focused on growth, which we've talked a lot about. Because we know that not all schools and students started at, you know, X level. And so really, to get to whatever growth or proficiency level we want, we know that there's going to have to be standard growth over time. And so that's why a lot of our principals are focusing on growth and why I think it shows up in the reports today. But, but to say, we can get you the spring MAP assessment data in terms of where we're landing with proficiency rates.
All right. Okay, thank you. And I want to say I am fully in support of focusing on growth. It's just the way this is expressed that it is a little bit confusing, at least to me. If I might, I have two other questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
One is, and again, Boreal Sun is relatively new, but you're coming up for your, not too many years.
Two more years.
For rechartering, right? So could you talk a little bit, as teachers have changed over, how you do your Waldorf training and where you are with that?
Oh, absolutely. And Mrs. Collins might want to talk about one of the trainings that she's gone to.
Well, I think handwork, I can safely say, is a unique position that is not anywhere else necessarily. And even as, as an arts educator was kind of new to me. But, you know, there is international Waldorf training that happens and you're able to take those trainings online. And I've done, probably, I think I've done four different, I've been at Boreal Sun now for four years. And I've done four or five different, mine have been all through conferences essentially that do the training. But I know a lot of our staff is able to go in-person and they fly over the summer and they take their personal time to go to more in-depth training. That it happens out of state and where they get real specific hands-on Waldorf training, which is really lovely. Especially as we have new teachers come in, we really make an effort to try to get those teachers to those, to those trainings so that we can have them feel confident in their, their Waldorf integration into our Alaska school.
And I'll follow up by saying that Friends of Boreal Sun, which is our nonprofit organization, has been really focused on, on making sure that our teachers get the training that they need. So this year, they just approved for, for actually of our teachers to go to training. One of them is our kindergarten teacher, which has been ongoing training that's been approved for her to go, she'll go down to Wasilla and it's for early childhood education. And then the other three new hired teachers have an option to do in-person training or training online. And they're choosing a variety of different things. But also, our, our teachers at the school that have been there over the years, like Mrs. Collins said, they love to be able to go down to, it's been Gradalis in, in Denver. But we're also discussing with Julie Pepe, who is the principal at Winterberry. And they're going to Sacramento and they're really appreciating offerings that they have there. So myself and my first grade teacher are going down to both Winterberry and Birch Tree next Monday and Tuesday in order to tour the school, get a lot of professional development from, for myself. Julie is retiring, so I want to learn from her. And then for our first grade teacher, who was hired at the very beginning of the year, right before school started, didn't get to go to training. So we at least want to offer her the opportunity to go down and tour other schools and learn from other Waldorf teachers. So.
And the Winterberry and Birch School, just for the listening public, they're in Anchorage, is that correct?
One's in Anchorage, one's in Wasilla.
Okay.
Or the Valley.
I've got one more.
One more, Mr. Doran. Go ahead.
And just an update, last year, you came to us to ask to raise your PTR to 24 instead of 22. Could you give us an update where that is?
Yeah, we had 188 applications for the lottery. And for next year, every grade is full except for eighth grade. We didn't have as many applications for our eighth grade. But all of our grades, K through seven, are, are full. So at 24.
24.
Well, our kindergarten is 20. So we keep our kindergarten at 20. But first through eighth grade is 24 students.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, that brings me to my question from Mrs. Julian, which is, what from your school could be expanded at neighborhood schools?
Well, there are so many things to talk about. But one of the things that makes our school special, and it's right there in our mission statements, is, is learning through the arts. And we have a really, like, I don't know if you've gotten to come into our school, but you will see it lined with art along the walls. And that's the visual arts, the drawing, the painting, which I don't even necessarily do with students. But then the knitting and crochet and embroidery and that cross-hemisphere brain. And then all the projects, like, I think this week it was castles that were lining the hallways of sixth grade that were done all in 3D. So it's really art-rich, integrated units that you see throughout the school, I think are really beautiful. And I think sometimes we miss them when we get so focused on things, other things, which is great. But I love that piece of it, and I love that for my kids, and I love walking around the school and seeing the students so excited about it and using all that tactile and sense and cross-hemisphere brain power to create beautiful things, and that's something I feel like I would love to see back out in our schools a little bit more.
That's awesome, thank you so much for sharing, Mrs. Julian, we'll very greatly appreciate it from all of you charter, so thank you so much for humoring me, and my question, Mr. Dorn?
One more, could you talk to us a little bit about how you have, I'm thinking in terms of your literacy approach, the Reads Act impacts on the Waldorf approach to early literacy, and then what your MAP results look like in that?
Yeah, so I would say that with, one of the things that I really appreciated was that when we were going to implement the Reads Act, I talked to Mr. Beam, and I asked him if he would come and present to the APC, and he did that in a very succinct, specific way, and answered all of the questions that they might have about that delay in reading or waiting to introduce that, and I think that what came out of that is more education for parents and understanding that early intervention is best, and meeting kids where they are in their continuum of learning as far as literacy goes. I would say that for me, over the years, I'm definitely a literacy specialist, and that's very close to my heart, so I also said, I think this is something that we need to support, I think we need to implement the Reads Act as the, the district is doing that, and I think a lot of parents got on board with that and said, absolutely, we think that literacy is very important, we want our kids to learn how to read, we want them to be proficient, we want them by third grade to have all the skills that they need in order to be, you know, learners. So, I think our M-class scores have gone from, I was just looking at that and figuring it a little bit, in the fall, our M-class percentage was 28.8% for benchmark or above, and I think this is taking last year's 2024 scores, because we're not finished with this school year. In the spring, it was 41.3% of the students were at benchmark or above, so that's a big improvement, lots of growth was shown, and I, I think, yeah, there's been a lot of attitude adjustment or change in feeling that this is something that's important for our school as well, so, and, and maybe some misconceptions along the way that people had about our school.
Mrs. Hardy?
Add on to that, and I did have something else, my own child, you know, attends Boreal Sun and was, through the M-class data, received extra services actually in Ms. Collins' group, and it was great, because this was last year, and he, he was a struggling reader, and things weren't clicking, and dyslexia runs in my family, and those were fears, and it's been so, now he is, reads everything in sight, even bought glasses, he was like, does this make me look like my nose is stuck in a book? I'm like, yeah, that, that's right, and that's what he sees himself as, as a reader, and I think it's credit to how they did implement the Alaska Reads, and that it, literacy is a huge part of what we do at Boreal Sun, it's, it's definitely, I know Waldorf has ideas out there, but I think the way that Ms. Foshee has led the staff has been really great, and you can see it in so many, even the way you ran the tutoring groups, kids loved being there, they had snacks, they, I, I was always around doing other stuff at that time, and you could just tell kids were learning and enjoying themselves, but back to why I originally raised my hand, I was hoping that maybe you'd also say, as something that our neighborhood schools could learn from, is one of the things that made me gravitate towards Boreal Sun when we enrolled our students, and that was the low-tech in the earlier grades, like, kindergartners don't have iPads, they don't have any of the technology, and I, I feel like that really benefits those students, and then it's a lot more time for play-based and teaching those grace and courtesy-type lessons, they set their own tables, and I had one son that attended a more traditional kindergarten, and I had another that attended at Boreal Sun, and I, I feel like it made a huge difference to have that more relaxed, but still literacy-focused kindergarten.
Absolutely, and cell phone usage that, you know, a lot of schools talk about as a problem or interfering with the learning is, is not an issue at Boreal Sun, kids know that their phones are away, they're not near them, so that does make an impact, and one of the things that I shared with my parent population early on was, oh, the book, The Anxious Generation, and just all the research that, that highlights in there about kids and screens and media and the effects on our community, and I think it is really important to step back and realize that technology is an amazing tool, and I've been looking at the technology standards for all the grades, because our APC is having a discussion about how we implement technology in our middle school classes and what that looks like, so I, I think it's important, as an educator, for many years, I used technology in first and second grade all the time, but it's using with as opposed to, you know, just being on an iPad to do work all day, and that looks very differently, so, yeah.
Thank you, and that's actually a perfect segue into our work session for next week, where we will be hitting up our cell phone policy and our electronic communications, so next Monday will be a really good work session. Is there anything further for our friends at our charter schools? Seeing Nothing, thank you, Ms. Foshee, thank you, all of our charter schools for being here this evening and sharing the wonderful things at your schools, thank you for taking our questions, much appreciated. With that, is there any board comments for the evening? If not, I would take, I guess we don't need a motion to adjourn, because we are in a work session, if there's no comments, we are now adjourned.